I call the August 21st, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting and Work Study Session to order. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega.
Present.
Vice Mayor Barry Graham.
Present.
Councilmembers Tammy Capooty, Tom Durham.
Here.
Betty Janik.
Present.
Kathy Littlefield.
Here.
And Solange Whitehead.
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson.
Here.
City Attorney Sherry Scott.
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews.
Here.
Acting City Auditor Lake Clough.
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. We have Scottsdale Police Sergeant Sean Ryan and Detective Tyler Neese, as well as firefighter Brian Messerlian. If anyone requires any assistance, let's start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call on Councilwoman Betty Janik.
At this time, we call our attention to the ongoing wars in foreign countries as they fight to protect their freedom and democracy. I ask you to join me in a moment of silence for these war-torn countries, as well as for the safety of the deployed men and women of the United States military. Thank you. Scottsdale residents wanting to volunteer their time and institute a positive change in our community are invited to apply to serve on city boards and commissions. Applications are being accepted through August 30th for openings in various boards and commissions, including the Board of Adjustment, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Historic Preservation Commission, Lost Trust Fund Board, and Transportation Commission. To view the complete list of current and future openings, please go to scottsdaleaz.gov and look under Boards and Commissions. For your information, during tonight's meeting, the council may make a motion to recess into executive session to obtain legal advice on any applicable item on the agenda. If authorized by the council, the executive session would be held immediately and would not be open to the public pursuant to Arizona law, then the meeting would resume following the executive session. Per our city council rules of procedure, citizens attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council and staff ourselves. Unauthorized remarks or disruptions would only delay our meeting, and it could result in removal from the forum. Next, we will go to public comment. Public comment is reserved for Scottsdale citizens, Scottsdale business owners and/or property owners to comment on non-agendized items that are within the council's jurisdiction. Advocacy for or against a candidate or a ballot measure during the council meeting is not allowed pursuant to state law and is therefore not deemed to be within our jurisdiction. No official council action can be taken on these items. And speakers are limited to three minutes. I'm told by the clerk that we have one person requesting to speak, and that would be Patricia Palet. If you could come forward and...Patricia Palet.
Sure. Are we ready?
Yes.
No, no, no. Oh, wait. One minute. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, Mayor, council members, I am a resident, property owner, taxpayer, and mother of five boys. I am here to ask you to look into the last...I'm sorry. I am here to ask you to look into the first-ever reinterpretation of the law that just happened this last cycle for school board candidates, and makes it appear the city is playing favoritism. And now I'd like the video to play. Thank you.
In Arizona, there are strict laws governing political signs, even criminal penalties for people who mess with them. So when these signs for a slate of Scottsdale Unified School Board candidates started going up around July 22nd, it looked like a clear violation to their opponents.
People are contributing money to these campaigns. Voters are going to go out and vote, and so it has to be an equal playing field.
To Jill Dunnekin and supporters of the competing Republican slate, it looked like these Democrat signs were up way too early. So they complained, and emails show the city initially agreed, removing one sign. Then the city abruptly changed course, and an employee told them they would not be removing signs after all.
You know, you're caught off guard, and the other team is getting visibility and name recognition. Allowing teams to operate under different rules is clearly election interference.
Democratic candidates Mike Sharkey, Donna Lewis, and Matt Petinsky did not respond to a request for comment. Arizona law says people can start putting up political signs 71 days before a primary election, as long as the signs are for a candidate for public office. This race, however, is unusual. Scottsdale School Board wasn't on the primary election at all, only the November general election. Seventy-one days before that is August 26th. Emails show Scottsdale code enforcement initially told the conservatives sign placements cannot occur prior to August 26th. That turned out to be bad information, and it's forced the Republican candidates to scramble. Dunnekin says they started putting out their signs last night, about two weeks behind.
The team of Jacobs, Beasley, and Hassler, who followed the city rules, who respect the citizens and the election process, were penalized because they were not informed of the city of Scottsdale's selective enforcement of rules this year.
Now, exposed person for the city gave us a statement explaining their position on the state's signed law, and it makes clear that the Democrats acted within the legal window. The statement also acknowledges the city changed its enforcement position on signs, but it does not address why, if it was because of confusion, or a mistake, or a reinterpretation of the rules. Jared, all right?
Thank you.
At this point, I would close public comment. Next, we will move on to the first agenda item, which has to do with our minutes. I request a motion to approve the regular meeting and work-study session minutes of June 25th, 2024.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Okay, the vote shows six...so the motion carries, six zero...six attending at the dais. Therefore, that motion carries. Next, we will move on to the regular meeting and work-study...excuse me, sorry. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda items. We have items one through five, which are fully filed and have all the supplemental information. I'm also looking to the clerk to see if there's any public comment on any item. Now I'm calling on our council ourselves to see if we have any question on any consent agenda item. Vice Mayor Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a...not pulling anything off consent, but I did have a question if somebody from the Water Department would oblige us for item number three. Thank you, Mayor.
So coming forward is Brian Beesmeyer, the award-winning water man...what was it? Aquaman of the Year, something like that.
Water reuse, yeah, Person of the Year.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor Graham, and council. Yes, sir. What's your question?
Yes, thank you. Brian, is there...so for item number three, we're approving the Scottsdale Water Strategic Plan for the next five years. I just want to confirm, is there anything in that item on tonight's agenda that would authorize...that this council would authorize mixing recycled water with regular tap?
Council, mayor, vice mayor, and council, not directly. That allows us to plan for that, but any...that would have to...first, the state has to authorize a permit, and that permit authorization would come sometime this fall. But then there's other actions that would have to occur that would come back to council for that approval. But that does allow us to plan in that direction.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I do have one comment for you, and that is regarding recycled water. And every drop of water in this apple probably has been recycled...how many times would you guess over the last million years?
I'm an engineer. I hate to guess.
Right. And the water that we wash it with, just to clean it at the end of the day and consume that water, of course, that is all EPA-tested, certified by our lab work, and that's the water that we consume through the whole process. So I really appreciate that. I kept this from lunch just to make sure I could award it to you. No. And thank you for keeping our water in great condition with all the team. Okay, thank you. There are no other questions on our consent agenda items, one through five. Therefore, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to adopt items...consent agenda items, one through five.
Second.
You move to approve.
Well, I've moved to approve.
Yes, I'll secure the approval.
Thank you. And so we have a motion on the floor, and a second.
Second.
Please record your vote. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we will move to regular agenda item number six, Bridge Housing Program Agreement Amendment. Our presenter is Judy Doyle, Community Service Assistant Executive Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. Tonight, we are requesting approval to amend our current contract for our bridge housing The amendment would be to extend the program that currently expires September 30th of this year through May 31st of 2025, and would be for five hotel rooms versus the current contract of 10 rooms at $190,000 of unspent grant funds from a grant that we had received from the Arizona Department of Housing. Now, it is important to note that this and the current contract and the amended contract would be grant funds, and we would not be using city funds. And I'll explain more of that as we move through the presentation. So I thought it was important to first talk tonight about what our current bridge housing program is. The program is designed to prevent homelessness. It provides temporary shelter combined with supportive services. Currently, we are renting 10 rooms from a hotel here in Scottsdale that provides emergency housing for seniors and families with minor children who have been displaced from their Scottsdale homes. The participants must work with a caseworker to become self-sufficient and secure, stable housing. Participants that actively work their case plan, they can stay in the program at the hotel up to 120 days. To be eligible for our program, you must be a senior age 62 or older, or a single parent with minor children. We will confirm that your last residential address within the last six months is a Scottsdale address, and we will also confirm that you can complete daily tasks on your own, such as getting in and out of the shower, eating, those kinds of things. It's also important to note that any persons who are struggling from a substance abuse disability are chronically homeless, are, or should I say, were from the zone, or are not a legal resident, are not eligible for our Scottsdale Bridge Housing Program. The program has not and will not accept those from the zone, or take U.S. immigration referrals through Title 42 or other resources. So participants must show proof of legal U.S. residency. So I also wanted to share the history of our bridge housing program, and I think it's important when we talk about this to mention in the timeline that in November of 2021, the Scottsdale voters approved the 2035 general plan, which includes a goal in the community well-being chapter to, and I'm going to quote, "provide housing options that meet the socioeconomic needs of people who live and work in Scottsdale." And there are a couple policies related to that goal that directly support our bridge housing program, and I'm going to focus on one of them and call it out. And again, I'm going to quote, "It's to seek and provide short-term housing options that accommodate those in need of immediate temporary shelter." So again, it aligns with this bridge housing program. In October of '22, we began our bridge housing program by utilizing a combination of funds from Easy Cares, Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community Funds, and Community Development Block Grant Funds for a contract with a local hotel. Then in June of '23, you approved a $940,000 grant from the Arizona Department of Housing to extend the bridge housing program, and per the terms of that grant, the funds were to be spent by June 30th of '24. On September 19th of last year, you approved a second contract for a bridge housing with that same local hotel for 10 rooms from October 1st of '23 through September 30th of '24, using that Department of Housing grant. In June of '24, our city manager signed an amendment to the funding agreement with the Department of Housing to extend the duration of the agreement from June 30th through September 30th, and I'll explain the need for that extension here on this next slide. So here's a breakdown of how we have been spending the $940,000 grant from the Department of Housing. We applied $37,000 towards the first agreement with the hotel. It was for 10 rooms in August and September of '23, and then almost $500,000 for a 12-month agreement to continue the program for 10 rooms. We entered into an almost $200,000 contract for supportive services with Community Bridges, Inc., and the supportive services assist participants with things like navigating homeless program services, searching for employment, applying for housing vouchers, searching for affordable homes or rentals, et cetera. We had estimated that supportive services contract to be $400,000, yet it came in at just under $200,000. And then when you factor the $8,700 that we spent on nutrition for the participants, it leaves us with just a little over $194,000 remaining in unspent grant funds. So in lieu of returning the grant funds back to the state of Arizona, we are requesting and want to extend our successful bridge housing program and prevent homelessness to our seniors and families with minor children that are in need. Because we had the unspent grant funds, we had requested an extension from the Department of Housing, and we were granted that extension from June 30th until September 30th, and our city manager signed that agreement in June, as I had mentioned. So you may remember from our discussion back in September that the hotel was going through a renovation. Unfortunately, they have had some delays in their renovation. They do anticipate the renovation to start here in the next couple months, but because of the upcoming renovation, the hotel could provide for five rooms for the bridge housing program. So tonight, we are asking to amend the existing contract for five hotel rooms for eight months from October 1st through May 31st of '25, using the $190,000 of grant funds, and then that remaining $4,400 would be used for nutrition for participants. I also wanted to share some statistics with you on the program. We are at an 86% success rate. We have served 165 people in need. 12 are currently in the program, and we've had 132 successful exits, and they have found secured housing. Participants have stayed in the program on average 74 days. Now, I do want to mention that the numbers here are a bit dated. As you can imagine, with people entering and exiting the program, they do change. We have now served 168 people, and we are still at that 86% success rate. So what does a successful exit mean? It means participants have secured a safe place to stay. This could be either housing that they could afford, it could be a friend or a family member, or it could be a shelter. Most shelters are at what we call a coordinated entry site, and this is where people can get matched for housing opportunities, as well as get provided additional services. So for example, if there is a senior whose social security income is, say, $950 a month, they're no longer able to work. As you can imagine, it's very difficult for them to find an affordable place to live. They may be able to get into a senior shelter that can help them longer than the 120 days that our program provides for, and get them either on a voucher, or help them with senior HUD housing, or even shared housing. Some demographics. So of the total served, over half, 55%, have been children, 91 children. We have served 28 seniors, or 17%, and then the remaining are parents. Of those served, 58% have been female, and 42% being male. I also wanted to share a couple success stories with you, and just share the impact that this program has had on people's lives. Recently, we had a single mother with her three children that were faced with homelessness when her work contract ended abruptly. We were able to successfully get them into our bridge program. Her children were able to continue in their Scottsdale schools. While they were in the program and working with our supportive services, the mother was able to secure a full-time job with an organization that not only provided a wage, but also provided housing. So it was a great success and a very positive outcome. Another success story that I wanted to share with you, we actually included in our news release for tonight's item, and this woman actually submitted a written comment for tonight as well. We had two seniors, a disabled woman and her husband, ages 71 and 80, and they were facing homelessness when they received a steep rent increase and could no longer afford their apartment in Scottsdale. They requested assistance, and through our bridge housing program, they were provided a place to stay and access to the services that then helped them find an affordable new place to rent. So just a couple of the many success stories that we've had. Bottom line, this is a program to prevent homelessness. So tonight, we are asking you to adopt Resolution Number 13...excuse me, 13197, to amend the contract with the local hotel to continue the bridge housing program through May 31st of '25. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. At this point, we will open public comment on this topic. I see two speakers who wish to speak. One is Ethan Nolden, and then Lee Cooley. If you could please step forward. We'll handle public comment first, and then we'll have our own council deliberations.
Good evening, Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Graham, rest of the council. Thank you so much for allowing me to have a few moments of your time. I'm actually going to do something that maybe doesn't happen very often for you. I'm going to commend you, because I think this is an excellent program, and I want to commend the council for having supported it for so long. I also want to commend staff, who does an excellent job running this program, and I know how important this is for the individuals within the program. It is much easier to prevent homelessness than it is to arise out of homelessness. So let me encourage you to take the staff's guidance here and to move forward with the amendment of the contract. I think it is beneficial for all of Scottsdale's residents to see no one put out on the street when they have an opportunity to be housed in a bridge program. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lee Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Graham, esteemed members of council. My name is Lee Cooley. I live off of 100th and Frank Lloyd Wright. I've been a resident for nearly 20 years. I've seen a lot change, but I've seen some things that stay the same, including neighbors helping neighbors. Just want to point out that two of the top three priorities for residents who participated in March's Speak Up Scottsdale survey, the one about the Community Assistant Office Annual Action Plan, two of those priorities were rental assistance and rental acquisition. Tonight, you've been asked to approve spending $190,000 in state funds so that a few of our neighbors have a safe and stable place to stay for up to 20 days before these monies run out next May. Now, as Judy mentioned, there used to be enough funding for 10 rooms a month for a full year. Can you imagine having to choose which five seniors or families with small children get to keep a roof over their heads? I can't. And these people, as she pointed out, aren't struggling with substance abuse. They're not from the zone. They are legal residents of Scottsdale who are trying to get a fresh start. I encourage you to do the right thing this evening and adopt the Bridge Housing Program Amendment Agreement. It's not only the least we can do, it's the best thing to do. Thank you for your service to the people of Scottsdale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooley. And at this point, I would close public comment on item number six. I see Councilwoman Janik, and then Councilmember Durham wishing to speak.
Proceed. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank our community services team for really good work. Not only do you follow the letter of the law, but your compassion and concern is obvious, and I do believe that is a big component to the success of our program. So I can't thank you enough. The other thing is what Mr. Nolden said, the best way to prevent homelessness is not to let people get homeless in the first place. So this bridge program accomplishes that, and that is very, very good for our community. And next, what Mr. Cooley said, "Speak Up Scottsdale, these are our neighbors. We are helping them when they fall on tough times." And I have a feeling that most of us have been in that situation at one time or another in our lives, and... in our lives, and perhaps we had to depend on this type of assistance to keep us off the street temporarily. So just a big, big thank you for all that you're doing. I really appreciate this. It's really a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also second Councilwoman Janik in what she says about her staff. They've done a great job on this program. And I would ask, Mr. Lane, can you put up the picture that I sent? There's been a lot of misinformation about this program. The slide that we put up here has been widely circulated on social media, and it says that our program, excuse me, was for migrants and homeless from the zone. And I just wanted to confirm, as you stated here, that there have been no migrants in the program, and no one from the zone has been in the program.
Mayor and council, that is correct. We have not had anyone from the zone or Title 42.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to confirm that. When Representative Grass was here a year or so ago, he complained that we were not providing any services as part of this program. I think he called it Housing First. And I just wanted to confirm that we are indeed providing services to the people in this program to help them get back on their feet. It's not just a Housing First program, as Representative Grass claimed.
Mayor and council members, yes, that is correct. We do have a supportive services contract, so each of the participants do work with a caseworker for a number of things. They help with the initial intake, they are working a case plan with the participants to try to find a secure housing, they help them navigate other services that are available, they help them with employment searches, searching for affordable rental units, et cetera. So yes, it is heavily case managed.
Thank you. I thought it was very important to clarify this point about migrants and people from the zone, because that's certainly not what we voted for, and so I'm glad to confirm that that has not taken place. This program's been very successful, as you pointed out, so I will certainly be voting in favor of it, and I wish we could do more. Yes, so is it enough to just say we would, I move to adopt Resolution Number 13197? That's good enough, isn't it?
Mayor and Councilman Durham, yes, that would be.
All right. So I move to adopt Resolution Number 13197.
I second that.
I heard a second from Councilwoman Littlefield. Would you like to speak, Councilwoman? It's the Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a program that I have supported. I support it primarily because it works. It helps people, citizens of Scottsdale, that need a little helping hand, and that's a good thing for us to be able to do this. The only thing I'm really sorry about is we're only going to have five rooms instead of 10, and I'm hoping we can reverse that in the next grant phase and get the 10 rooms back, if we possibly can, because we need them. We use them, and they help people, and they help children. If it didn't work, if it wasn't helpful, if people just went back and did drugs and did all these other things, I wouldn't be so enthusiastic. But this is something that helps mothers, fathers, grandparents, brothers, sisters, children, to get back on their feet and to continue with their life, and the stories that you have given us of how that has been working for Scottsdale citizens is tremendous. So many things are tried these days that don't work, that just continue the problems on. This works. Let's keep it going. So I'm very glad to second this motion. I hope it passes, and I hope in the future, when we get the next grant, that we can move back to 10 rooms again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Graham, next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judy. Just a few questions for you, Judy. Are these, do you present these programs to the Human Services Commission? Or do you present to the Human Services Commission?
Mayor and members of council, yes, we do present updates to the commission. They have been updated on the Bridge Housing Program a few times, and they do support the program.
Did they review this latest update? Did you bring that to them?
Mayor and members of council, we did not. Only because of a timing issue. They were meeting on August 8th. We wanted to be respectful to have the agenda out, so that council and the public saw the item first. The agenda wasn't posted until that Friday, so it was just a timing issue. But again, during any update, they are very supportive of the program.
Was there not enough time because you didn't know about the renewal before you could have scheduled with Human Services? Is that what happened?
Mayor and members of council, it was really just when the agenda for council was posted. We were wanting to be respectful of council and ensure that they had the information before others.
Now, that 86% success, that number was used before we passed last year's program. So did you guys go back and re-measure it, success rate?
Mayor and members of council, no. We are using the same calculation that we have. We have just maintained a very successful program.
So would you say it was about that rate for the preceding 12 months?
Mayor and members of council, I don't have what the success rate was a year ago. I do know that today, we're at 86%. I think it was very close to that when we were here last September.
But that doesn't include all the activity over the last year?
Mayor and members of council, yes, it does. Yeah, that is the number, 86% since the inception of the program, October of '22.
So when's the last time you measured that? I feel like, I was confused there.
The end of July.
Okay, and so the number, so let me rephrase that. 86% success was used last year, and you're saying that you remeasured it all this year, and it was the same exact rate?
Mayor and members of council, it must be a coincidence, because yes, we're at 86%.
Okay. Now, when you measure that success rate, is that a point in time, like upon exit of the program?
Mayor and members of council, it is calculated based on currently who's in the program, so, you know, the participants. It includes the successful exits and those that were exited from the program. So it's the total served.
Do you do any follow-up after that exit point to make sure success is continuing?
Mayor and members of council, so we have had a couple go into our tenant-based rental assistance program, and they are receiving case management for two years. If it is somebody that has exited the program and no longer needs resources, we do not. If it is somebody that wants to continue having resources, yes, we will keep their case open.
The ones that go into tenant-based assistance, does those count as success or not success?
That would count as success, because we have found them a secure place to stay.
How would you describe the, if 86% succeeded, how would you describe the 14%?
Mayor and members of council, I'm sorry, can you ask?
How would you describe the non-successful ones? What does that look like?
We've had, I believe it was 32, I'm sorry, 21. We have had 21 that have exited the program that were not successful.
Can you give, like, what's an example of someone who wasn't successful? Does one come to mind?
Not one specific, Mayor and members of council. I'm thinking that it's folks that maybe weren't doing their case plan, they weren't looking for employment, they weren't doing what's required of them in the program, and I don't know if Sue, if that's clear, or if you want to add to that. Sue O., she is our Human Services Manager, and she is the amazing one that is overseeing this program, and so.
Everyone knows Sue O. She's great.
I applaud her heavily.
She's great.
Mayor Ortega, members of the council, Vice Mayor Graham. So what comes to mind is folks who are in the program. We found them an affordable housing unit, maybe not in Scottsdale, maybe in Phoenix, or a shelter that they can exit to, and they decide not to do that. They are very specific in where they want to stay, and if they're not able to find that, and then they hit the 120-day mark. Unfortunately, we do exit them from the program.
You haven't had any calls for service for participants over the past year?
Mayor and members of council, no, we have not. Recently, unfortunately, one of the participants was a victim of a property crime, but no, they have not been, we've had no issues in that regard.
Do you notify neighbors of the program?
Mayor and members of council, we don't notify, per se. I know after our last meeting in September of last year, the community that is adjacent to the hotel.
Right.
Had requested city staff to come out and respond to questions and concerns that they had. We did. It was Sue, myself, our Human Services Director, Police Department, and we addressed all of their concerns, and as far as I know, we have not heard from them since, and they were satisfied.
So you notified them because they requested it?
Mayor and members of council, that is correct.
Have you, do you notify neighbors for similar programs? Is there kind of a policy for whether you notify neighbors? Or is it just sort of decided on a case-by-case basis? I know there's not many programs, just kind of curious.
Mayor and members of council, if you have a specific program that you.
You don't know, okay.
Yeah.
Can you confirm over the last year, I know the policy now is, you check the residents of all participants that are from Scottsdale?
Mayor and members of council, yes. We absolutely verify.
Does that apply to all the participants for the preceding 12 months?
Mayor and members of council, yes.
Very good. You guys don't do, like, do you do sobriety? You check sobriety?
Mayor and members of council, if our professional staff or professional navigators with our contracted service, if they do think use of alcohol or drugs is present, yes, they will screen. I can tell you at this point, we have not had any issue with drugs or alcohol in the program.
But it's not like a, it's not like a universal requirement for participants?
Mayor and members of council, no, it is not.
People talk, are you familiar with the term mixed hoteling?
Mayor and members of council, somewhat, yes.
I was just gonna, if you could explain that to what, to the audience, what that is?
Mayor and members of council, maybe it would be better if you explained.
You're the expert. You're the subject matter expert. Mixed hoteling, I understand. Maybe Sue O., do you know, are you familiar with that concept?
I am familiar. I'm not comfortable saying what it is, because I'm not sure.
I mean, is it kind of the participants in a hotel, but because the program is smaller than the number of hotel units, you have normal paying customers? So you mix the program with?
That's my understanding of mixed hotel.
Is that kind of how you would define it?
Yes.
Does the city have a policy on mixed hoteling?
Sir, that's, you know, Vice Mayor, the questions that you're asking are not pertinent in this case what a term of mixed housing is, nor is it relevant.
This program does.
Excuse me, sir, I'm saying that because you are going down, I realize you voted against the measure a year ago, and you can be very clear about staying that. The facts that are presented today, and it was a 6-1 vote, and you persist to go down a trail of asking for new definitions, which are not relevant to the success of a program. So I want to make that very clear, and you seem to be going down that pathway again.
Respectfully, Mayor, I would hope that my colleagues would be interested in these answers.
Sir, I.
This is absolutely relevant to the program. I would, I would.
The program is as presented, and the statistics are people, and people have outcomes, and outcomes have positive consequences. We're not talking about setting policy or admission of a policy or requesting, as some accusatory comments were made last time about whether they were from the zone or not, which was also the.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know what you're referencing.
But I'm saying, well, certain questions that came up last time have been clarified by a successful program. So I want to keep you on track, if you'd like.
I think, I believe I'm perfectly on track.
Call the question.
We.
Call the question.
You can't call the question, check the parliamentary procedure. You can't call the question until my time, until I finish my questions.
Sir, just a second. We have a body here.
Yes, sir.
You are going along a pathway. The question has been called. We will vote on the question.
No, 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 I appeal that. I appeal that.
You may.
You cannot, you cannot, when I'm in the.
Sir, you could have a continuous stream of 20 minutes of questions and say that you have a right to continue.
I can continue, I can continue my questions.
It's called filibustering, and that's why.
No, I'm.
That's why.
Every member up here.
I suggest that we have our attorney address the question that Councilmember Graham has brought up.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janik, Vice Mayor Graham, the question you're asking me about is whether or not you can call the question at this time.
Correct.
Your Council Rules 11.20, that rule does say that after obtaining the floor, any member of the council may make a motion to call the question.
Okay, thank you. And Barry did have the floor, so thank you.
I do also want to counsel, caution the council, that we are starting to get a bit far afield of this agenda item. If you're asking for a land use policy, that's unclear to me from your question. Are you asking what the land use policy is on mixed hoteling?
I'm asking about city policy, very basic. Do we have, we have a program here. Do we have a policy? Does the city have a policy? And is the city following that policy about the program we're voting on? It's pretty simple. So, Mr. Mayor, I respect that our interpretations may differ about our jobs, but I was elected to represent residents, which includes asking questions they want to know.
Sir, I believe that they initiated this discussion with our general plan, and that's the basis that was voted on by the people, and that's the so-called Bible that we're going with to, not to explore other cases of notifications.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
So, we have a question. We can vote on that question.
Okay, so I can.
Because if the body chooses to cut you off, that's up to the body. I did not call the question.
No, no, the body, the body cannot choose to cut me off, Mr. Mayor.
They can ask.
They cannot choose to cut me off.
They can ask that.
Read the rules of procedure.
Sir, I am also trying to administer a sense of decorum, so that, so that, there is no filibustering, because you could go on for two hours under your precepts.
I don't, I don't think I have it in me to do that.
I don't know why.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
So based on this, there was a question called, and you could continue to ask 50 more questions.
Thank you. I don't have that many.
But proceed with, you know, I have, I have the, as presiding, I have to look for the good of the order, and that's why I interpret the question as asking whether that can be called, and once a question is called, we return to the motion.
Thank you for the education, Mayor. I'll resume my questions. Thank you.
I.
Actually, I actually don't have that many more. I'm almost done.
You have.
I'm almost done. I promise.
Well, that's, that's why sometimes, you know, the.
Mr. Mayor, just because you don't like my questions doesn't mean they're not relevant.
Sir, I just told you prefacing that any zoning question or policy question is not on the agenda right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
You get two more questions. How's that?
You don't get to allow a lot of me questions.
Excuse me, sir.
You didn't elect me.
Sir, I.
You know, I, our.
Am I talking to your two twins, or what? I mean, come on.
Am I talking to them?
Let's just figure this one out. The question is, as posted on the agenda item.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I would.
The question is for, for the adoption of the authority to continue a contract, continue a contract that's already been approved by the body.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Well, you get, ask two questions.
I will ask, I will ask as many, I will ask as many questions as I desire.
Okay, how do we ascertain the question, request for the question? Because I will respect my other.
Because I'm following the rules of procedure that you don't like.
The question was called, you have called the question.
I didn't call the question. You mean, you mean point of order.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Mayor, so Vice Mayor Graham is correct that you can't interrupt him while he has the floor to call the question.
Someone else call the question.
But, I'm sorry. But, I'm sorry, right. And I'm not accusing any council member, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just explaining what the rules say. The rules also say that any council member needs to follow the direction of the presiding officer, and if they want to appeal the presiding officer's decision, then they can do that. But if, if Mr. Graham is saying, and I think he has said, that he only has a few more questions, they're going to be on topic, then perhaps we should give him a few more minutes to see how this plays out.
The rules of procedure, though, if it's a very clear-cut case, parliamentarian should enforce it, but if it's gray or requires judgment, then the presiding officer can make a decision which I can appeal. That's what the rules of procedure say.
Excuse me, if I could respond to that. The rules of procedure give the authority to the presiding officer, the parliamentarian can provide information to this council. At the end of the day, the presiding officer's judgment applies unless the council member who's objecting appeals to the council, and the council votes on that. So I beg to differ, Mr. Graham, that I am the authority on the procedure of this council, this council governs itself.
And I have the floor, and I yield the floor, and when I find something's off track, it's my duty, and I've, I've tried to get you in line on that
Mr. Mayor
And I can take it back.
Mr. Mayor
That's the way the rule is written.
Would you like to make
You must stay on topic.
Would you like to, would you like to make a ruling?
I have just made that you are off topic, I'll let you have two more questions, because that's my prerogative, and I wish that you would stay on topic, which is required as well. As soon as you stray from topic, per Article 611, or whatever it is, I can say, per Arizona statute, you shall yield the floor because you have strayed from the topic. That's my judgment call, that's my
It's a judgment call, thank you.
Yeah, but it's my judgment call.
Right.
Because I'm the presiding, and you're not. Okay? So, right now, at this point, I'll give you one more question, just, just to be nice, okay?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor
Sir, I've just told you
Mr. Mayor, you don't limit my questions.
I can limit
You don't limit, you don't listen, you don't limit the questions that the residents here
I have, I have a motion, or I will take a
You're violating the rules of procedure.
I am asking you to
You're clearly violating the rules of procedure.
Two questions, try it.
You don't get to
I'm asking questions
You don't limit the council members' questions up here, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, I am saying that number one, you strayed from the topic, therefore that's a violation of the open meeting law, because that, yes, the
That's your
I suggest you look it up, because the state statute says you shall stay on the agenda as posted. If you start straying off topic, then the public is being cheated, or possibly you're entering information that should not, has not been duly posted on the agenda. That is the law of Arizona, and that's my job to make sure that we don't fall in violation of that, because you could start asking questions about what games they're playing in the neighborhood, and anything else you may decide, because you would have, so, at this point
Thank you, Mayor. You, thank you for the education.
And I will stand by that, if you need to be, you will notice that in our council laws, and in the state of Arizona statutes, you must stay on topic.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to continue my questions.
No, we've called the question.
The que, I, we, Mr. Derp, we
Sir, just, just ask a question, can you, can you ask one more question?
If
Rather than being argumentative
If you, if, I'm, I'm not arguing, if you'll yield to me, Mayor.
Excuse me, sir. What is happening has been explained once already to you.
Oh, I can keep up.
And some, and any one of us can call, I'll call a question, and the question was called, I recognize that question, therefore I will allow us to vote on the, whether the question carries or not. If the, if the motion
Okay.
Carries, then we will go directly to the vote on the motion.
So you're, so you're violating the rules of procedure.
A question has been called, I have recognized a fellow colleague. The fellow colleague has called the question, we will vote on the question. Go ahead. Okay, I didn't see any other, so we have a question called, what the question is, is should we, if passed, then we would move to the vote of the agendized item. So, please record your vote, the question is to call the question, and afterwards proceed to the vote.
Thanks, Sherry.
Okay, the vote is five affirmative and one no, and I believe Ms. Kaputti is absent, Councilwoman Kaputti is absent. Therefore, the motion carries at this point, there's no further discussion, and we move to the vote on the, excuse me, at this point, we move to the motion itself, and there's no further dialogue from anyone else up here. In this case, please record your vote. The motion carries five affirmative, and Vice Mayor Graham and the negative, Councilwoman is not attending. So, therefore, we are concluded with item number six, bridge housing. Next, we move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for Scottsdale citizens, business owners, and our property owners to come forward for three minutes on any item not on the agenda, not properly posted, then they could speak on that topic. So noting, there is no speaker requesting that, therefore I will close public comment. Moving on to item number seven, item number seven is receipt of citizens petitions. I'm told by the clerk, there is no request to submit a citizen petition, therefore that item is closed. Therefore, at this point, we will move on to the work-study session. Work-study sessions provide a less formal setting for the mayor and council to discuss specific topics with each other and the city staff, and provide staff with an opportunity to receive direction from the council, and also, it's an opportunity for the public to come forward, because this work-study item has been duly posted, and the public can comment on the agendized work-study item. I'm told there's no request to speak on the public work-study item. Therefore, we will move on in our agenda. Final, it is the Financial and Capital Improvement Plan, CIP update. We have a preliminary fiscal year 2024. The presenters are Sonia Andrews, City Treasurer, and Allison Timque, City Engineer. Please come forward below.
Thank you, Mayor. Next slide. So our fiscal year end ended on June 30, and our fiscal year-end timeline for reporting starts basically with our fiscal year-end, and between now and September, we're still in the process of closing our books. In September and October, we will be, our books will be audited by an external auditor, and in November, we will be ready to present those audit results to the audit committee, and in December, we will be able to present final audited financial reports for the fiscal year 23, 24 to council. So that's the process. Next slide. So right now, we're still in the early phases of our year-end closing. We still have year-end entries to make, so this preliminary update is truly preliminary. As we continue to close our books, some of the numbers are subject to change. And then we will, again, like I said, go through all the financial audits, the federal grant audits, and all the different audits, and in October, we will complete our annual financial reports to then be able to report to council. Next slide. So even though we're still in the process of closing, and we still have not completed all our closing entries yet, we are able to, with our preliminary numbers, we're able to report the following to council. In terms of the general fund, which is our largest operating fund for revenues, we are looking at, what we see is slower sales tax growth, but offset by strong construction sales tax collections for fiscal year 24, and I will explain a little bit more about that later. We also have state shared revenues this year in fiscal year 24 that reflects the strong income tax revenues that the state collected in fiscal year 22, and keep in mind that income tax allocations are allocated two years in arrears. So whatever we collected in fiscal year 24 comes from the collections in fiscal year 22. Property taxes, we saw lower property taxes than what we budgeted due to the refunds from the Kwazimire lawsuit with Maricopa County. They have already started refunding the lawsuit, class action lawsuit judgments in fiscal year 24. We will see the rest of the refunds that they will process this fiscal year, but that is why our property tax revenues came in lower than budget. As far as charges for services, our community services revenues like Westworld, TPC, parks and rent programs came in stronger than anticipated. Our fines and forfeitures came in lower than budget, and interest income came in quite a bit higher than budget because of the continued rate hikes in 2023 by the Federal Reserve, and also the delay in the rate cuts in '24 by the Federal Reserve. Next slide. As far as expenditures are concerned, we can report that our personnel costs are lower than budget due to vacancy savings, and also the delay in our class and comp implementation. Fire expenditures were slightly higher than budget due to the ambulance startup costs, and our transfers out from the general fund were higher because it reflects the increased interest earnings and construction sales tax that by policy we transfer over to our capital improvement funds. Next slide. So here's a look at our sales tax revenues by category. As you can see, every category except construction sales tax has come in lower than prior year, and that is mostly because in the prior year, we had the Super Bowl, and the continued pandemic spending spree, and the post-pandemic travel, which was seeing consumer spending slowing down, and so that's what fiscal year 24 sales tax revenue reflects. And so, the other thing that's of note is that fiscal year 24, we are still collecting residential rental tax, of which 10.2 million is in the general fund under the rental category. So with the passage of Senate Bill 1131, the residential rental tax will be eliminated, and actually, the slide says effective July 1, 2024, it's actually effective January 1, 2025, so there's, sorry about the error there. So, as you can see, the second line where it says rental, residential rental tax of the 25 million we collected, 10, about 10.2 million we will not see in fiscal year 25, 26. As far as construction sales tax is concerned, I just want to comment on that. Construction sales tax not only reflects just housing construction, but also infrastructure construction. So, as a government, we're not exempt from paying transaction privileged tax. So as we build our water infrastructure and our road infrastructure, as ADOT builds the infrastructure, we also collect construction sales tax from all the infrastructure construction. So the construction number does reflect infrastructure construction as well as housing construction. So overall, our sales tax revenues for fiscal year 24 came in 3% lower than last year, but we are still at 6% above the budget. So we did budget actually even lower. We anticipated it coming down, but fortunately, it's not as low as we anticipated. So we're doing well on that. Next slide. This slide shows our state shared revenues, which is our second largest revenue source, and as you can see, the state shared income tax, which is the second row, it's 40% higher than last year, 64.4 million compared to 46.1 million last year. And that is because reflects the strong income tax collections from fiscal year 22, the strong employment wage growth, and the capital gains that was realized in fiscal year 22 by the state. And we do not expect this high level of income tax state shared revenues moving forward, and also, it does not yet reflect the implementation of the state flat tax. So as we move on to the future years, we will not be seeing this high level of state shared income tax. Property tax, which is the very last row on the slide, came in just 2% less than budget, and again, that reflects the initial refunds of the Kwazimire lawsuit that we spoke about. Next slide. And this slide shows the details of the charges for services, as we talked about earlier, the Westworld and TPC came in stronger than we had budgeted, which is good news, and we also had some other revenues come in that are stronger than we anticipated. The, the other category looks like it's 73% over budget because we haven't closed out our books yet, there is still an adjusting entry we need to do there. There's a 2.8 million developer contribution that will be moved out of the general fund into a special revenue fund for its dedicated purpose. So that will reduce that amount. Next slide. So, overall, this slide shows the total general fund revenues from preliminary result standpoint were 2% above the prior year, and about 6% below, I mean, above positive with respect to our budget. And then this slide also shows the high interest earnings that we talked about earlier were 76% in the positive because of the delay in the interest rate cut by the Federal Reserve, and also the continued rate, interest rate hikes that were done in '23. Okay, next slide. Now we move on to expenditures. And personnel costs, as you can see, personnel costs 11% higher than last year, and that is because last year, we had ARPA federal stimulus money of 14.6 million that paid for our public safety personnel costs. So without that ARPA money, the personnel costs increased by about 4%. And overall, there's other expenditures are slightly negative in terms of, compared to budget because of various public safety costs. The transfers out are higher than budget because, again, we transfer the interest earnings and construction sales tax to our capital improvement funds, and because we got higher interest than expected, and higher construction sales tax than we expected, so the transfers were higher than we expected. But overall, expenditures are 8% above prior year, and 2% lower than budget. Next slide. And this slide shows the expenditures by division, and as you can see, I will point out the public safety, fire, and police, it looks like it's 18% and 12% higher than prior year, and that's because last year, we had stimulus funds that paid the salaries, and so the salaries were 14.6 millions lower last year. And again, the one negative variance is because of the ambulance startup costs. So with that, that ends my section of the presentation. I can answer any questions, or hand it over to Allison for the CIP update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. I would just comment, as you began your presentation, these are the preliminary numbers, and we will have three other reports as things come clearer into focus. So, this opportunity, I see Vice Mayor Graham wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Sonia, you mentioned the Kwazimire lawsuit. Can you, just for the, I know what that is, we know what that is, but can you just briefly explain it for our viewers and the audience?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, Councilmember. So, the Kwazimire versus Maricopa County class action lawsuit, in a nutshell, properties that were residential rental properties that were converted from primary residence to rentals, so like short-term rentals or long-term rentals, was supposed to be reassessed in terms of their limited property value. And most of the time, that reassessment would have lowered their assessed value and lowered their property taxes. The county failed to do that for many years, and so a lawsuit was brought regarding that, and the class, a class action lawsuit was brought regarding that, and the class action lawsuit, the judgment was that the county needs to refund these taxes that were over-collected. We were We were notified in April after the budget was put together that they were, because of the class action lawsuit, they were starting to process these refunds and will start to process the refunds in fiscal year 24, with the majority of the refunds being processed in this fiscal year, 24, 25. The impact to Scottsdale is about 10 million, of which approximately 5 million will impact the general fund. So in a nutshell, that's what this class action lawsuit is, and the county is processing these refunds.
And then where does that, just on this report, where is that reflected? What is that impact, which line on this report?
Yes. So on slide.
My apologies if you already said it.
On slide seven.
Okay.
So if you look at property taxes, we projected that we will collect 37.2 million in property taxes in the general fund. And because they started processing the refunds, we only collected 36.5 million. And so this is just the initial processing.
So you think it would have been 4 million higher, but it was a net 1, 1 million below the budget? Do you think that was the impact? For fiscal 20, for fiscal '24?
Yes, majority of that would be the impact, yes.
Slide, slide six. 6% over, first of all, I'm pretty ecstatic about that. Maybe we budget too conservatively, but 6% over budget sounds pretty nice. Do you remember what that percentage was over but, over budget last year?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but we can certainly get that for you.
I was just wondering if you knew off the top. And then my last question, you mentioned about, I think, one remaining journal entry. Was that for TPC or Westworld?
You mean the journal entry I mentioned? So if you go to.
I think it's slide eight.
Slide.
Maybe not.
Yeah, slide eight. Yes. So under other, where it shows 12.6 million as the preliminary and 5.3 million above budget or 73% above budget, there was a developer contribution that was accidentally put into the general fund that doesn't belong in the general fund because it's restricted for certain purposes.
But so you're going to put a receivable?
Correct. Yes, so we will be moving that as part of our closing entries out of the general fund.
The other thing I was going to ask is why do you, did you mention why TPC, you think, you thought was up from the prior year? I would have thought FY '23 would have been stronger, but we all know what kind of a show '24 ended up being, so. TPC, actual FY '23, 2.4 prelim 3, I just, if you had any remarks on the increase? It's okay. It's okay. Thank you, Sonia. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Let's proceed. And this is why I appointed you Vice Mayor on the Audit Committee.
At your, at your service, Mayor.
Proceed, Ms. Timcue.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So for the CIP update tonight, we have decided to bring it to you in a different format. The goal of the update is intended to be a high-level summary of how some of our CIP projects are progressing. Rather than presenting a PowerPoint with a few still pictures, we thought the following video presentation would give you a better reflection of the tremendous progress that we have made on some of our recent construction projects. After viewing, please let me know if you have any questions. And also, for your information, the video is available on our city YouTube page. Thank you.
Welcome to investing in our Scottsdale quarterly recap, highlighting projects from Scottsdale's capital improvement program. Pima Road. Improvements to Pima Road between Pinnacle Peak Road and Happy Valley Road were completed in July of 2024. Pima Road was widened to three through travel lanes in each direction to improve the capacity and operational efficiency of the roadway. Several drainage improvements were installed, including large box culverts under the road and a drainage channel on the east side of Pima Road. The new road includes landscape medians, six-foot sidewalks, and two miles of on-street bike lanes, expanding the city's bike network to more than 180 miles. The project was built in conjunction with the improvements to Happy Valley Road, which will be complete in the fall of 2024. Intersection of Miller and Jackrabbit Roads. Improvements to the intersection of Jackrabbit and Miller Roads were completed in July 2024 that are designed to enhance pedestrian access to the Arizona Canal Path and roadway safety. New flashing beacons, trail crossing signs, and narrower vehicle lanes at the curve of the roadway are designed to increase driver awareness of pedestrians and reduce vehicle speeds. A high-visibility crosswalk links the Arizona Canal Path. This project was initiated by a citizen petition, and the design received unanimous support from the community. Miller Road and Bridge. This project will connect two segments of Miller Road via a new bridge over the Rahide Wash. The new roadway will include two travel lanes in each direction, bike lanes, and a detached sidewalk with landscape buffers. The bridge was designed to be as low-profile as possible to fit into its neighborhood setting and maintain view corridors. When complete in the fall of 2024, this connection will create a new option for north-south travel beyond Scottsdale and Pima Roads and provide a direct connection to the Hayden Road Loop 101 interchange. Ashler Hills Park. Scottsdale residents near Ashler Hills Drive and 74th Way are getting a brand-new neighborhood park, thanks largely to funding approved by Scottsdale voters in the 2019 bond election. Work began in 2023, and now many of the park's elements are taking shape. The 17-acre park includes open turf play areas, walking paths and trails, a shaded playground, lighted sports courts for basketball and pickleball, restrooms, and lighted parking. When complete in early 2025, Ashler Hills will be the city's northernmost park. Booster Pump Station 83. Booster Pump Station 83 has a small footprint but is a critical part of Scottsdale's water system that helps keep the water flowing to a significant portion of the city. Updates to the station include 10 new pumps that can reliably move over 30 million gallons of water per day. This project presents a unique challenge. All of the updates to the booster pump station need to be made while keeping the old facility operational, and that requires careful coordination by city water operation and engineering staff, construction contractors, and design engineers. When the project is complete in early 2025, the last of the old pumps will be turned off and removed, leaving only the newly-installed pump station and equipment, ready to keep serving Scottsdale for many years. Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well, 54C. Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well, or ASR Well, 54C, is part of a larger well program that maximizes Scottsdale's renewable surface water supplies and minimizes the use of groundwater. This long-term strategy has been essential in ensuring a reliable water supply amidst ongoing drought conditions. The well will deposit water into Scottsdale's underground aquifer in times of surplus and extract water from the aquifer when supplemental water is necessary to meet demand. The well will be able to pump about 2,500 gallons per minute once the rehabilitation is complete in early 2025. The infrastructure is surrounded by a new 10-foot perimeter wall to reduce noise and blend into the surrounding environment. Indian Bend Wash Underpass. In May of 2024, work began on a new pedestrian underpass along the Indian Bend multi-use path under Chaparral Road just east of Hayden Road. The project will increase safety at this busy intersection, and the underpass will allow more green light time for vehicles by reducing bike and pedestrian traffic and crosswalks. To expedite construction, Chaparral Road is currently closed to all traffic just east of Hayden Road and will reopen in early September. The multi-use path will remain closed at Chaparral Road until the project is complete in early 2025. During construction, the multi-use path on the west side of Hayden Road provides an alternate route on Scottsdale's path system. Fire Station 612. Construction is underway on Fire Station 612 on the northeast corner of Hayden Road and Mayo Boulevard. The 12,000-square-foot fire station will house a four-person engine company, two-person battalion chief unit, and a wildland interface fire attack vehicle. The station was funded by voters in the 2019 bond election to improve response times for emergency services in the area. Personnel at Fire Station 612 are anticipated to respond to over 2,000 incidents per year when the station opens in the summer of 2025. And that concludes the latest highlights of capital projects in our community. Thanks for watching.
Thank you. Excellent. And really, really appreciate all the expertise and planning. Vice Mayor Graham has a question or request, or anyone else, and Councilwoman Whitehead. Let's go to Graham first.
Thank you, Mayor. Allison, appreciate the production. Are we going to see, like, budget to actual on those projects?
Councilmember Graham, no. This, the intent of the update is to show you the update of the construction projects. The budget to actuals are available in the city's budget, adopted budget, which is on the city's web page.
Didn't, don't we, but other past meetings, haven't we discussed budget to actual in presentation? Was there, was there a policy change or?
Councilmember Graham, on some of this, the PowerPoint slides, we do include budget to actual on particularly some of the bond projects. But going forward, I think this is probably a more useful update for you to see the actual progress that we're making on our construction projects because we actually bring all of these projects to you and their budgets several times throughout the process. We, anytime we have a construction project, we're bringing that to you. Anytime we're requesting additional funding, we're bringing that to you. If you do want to see specific budget to actuals, I'm sure we can include that in here.
Well, it's, it's not just for me. It's, this is for the public. It's for the residents to see how their money's getting spent. So I, going forward, I would be a request I would have. So I like the production a lot, but budget to actuals in the projects would be helpful and instructive. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, Councilwoman Whitehead and Councilwoman Janik.
Allison, I did want to just thank you for this summary. I think it does really help, and it helps us share with the public what is going on. And so, and I do appreciate that we get the financials on a regular basis, but sometimes it's easy to say the city's not doing anything, and this is a great example of how Scottsdale became a world-class city and how we continue to invest and continue to be a world-class city. So I'm really excited about this new format, and I agree that, you know, we do always need to look at the numbers, and I appreciate how often we do that, and we do it in a public forum. So thank you.
Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Barry Graham. I think that one of the reasons we wanted this public presentation was to review the numbers. I think we feel that we need to be more aware of what's going on. Yes, I know you come and you ask for additional funding when needed, but I think this encapsulates everything visually, and I, I would request that you include numbers along with the presentation because I do believe that was one of the key points we wanted when we requested that this be done at a city council meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Yeah, I just would like to add my two cents. Thank you for the presentation. I enjoy seeing all the, the pictures of how things are progressing, but I would also like to have a review as we go along of the financials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no other council members wishing to speak, so I think we are concluded on the work-study items as agendized. At this point, I would request a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second? Please record your vote. Boom, boom.
I can't go.[1764.51]